The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a couple of reappointments. Mr. James Cooper to the Fair Housing Commission. Motion in second to reappoint Mr. Cooper. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. Also, a reappointment of Mr. Boyce Hamlet to the Water and Sewer Commission. Motion in second to reappoint Mr. Boyce Hamlet. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. And then we have a resolution. I get a motion to read the resolution.
No, just read it.
Just read it. Okay. Would the Frazier family please come forward? Normally I would come down there and join you, but in the events of safety right now, I'm gonna stay up here. But I will, if you'll just, so I can turn around and face the audience. This is a resolution honoring John Bernard Frazier Jr. It's resolution number A666. Whereas John Bernard Frazier Jr. was loved by many and a valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas, and whereas John Bernard Frazier was a wonderful and loving father to three sons, Louis Frazier, his wife Corinne, Thomas Frazier, Amanda, and John V. Frazier III is deceased. He cherished his beloved wife Mary Beth Moore Frazier for 60 years. He adored his seven grandchildren, Olivia Grace Frazier, Madeline Moore Frazier, Maston Derby Frazier, Rivers Hope Frazier, Race Lee Frazier, and Juliana Rimfry and Walper Perd. Whereas John was educated in the Warren Public Schools and Southwest at Memphis, now Rhodes College, where he was inducted into the Omicron Delta Kappa Honor Society. He graduated from the Dallas Institute of Funeral Service, where he served as president of his class. And whereas when John returned to Warren, Arkansas, he was the second generation owner and operator of Frazier's funeral home. He served as a director of Selected Funeral and Life Insurance Company and third generation banker of the Warren Bank and Trust Company, where he was chairman of the board. And whereas John Frazier served 12 years as mayor of Warren, John modernized the city government, including the police, sanitation, and fire departments, as well as led the 278 bypass construction, resulting in significant economic development. And whereas in 1975, John received the first Bradley County Citizen of the Year Award. He was a Rotarian, where he was a Paul Harris Fellow recipient and demonstrated a life devoted to service. And whereas outside of Warren, John served as chairman of the Arkansas State Burial Commission, board member of the Potlatch Educational Foundation, and a major supporter of the Donald W. Reynolds YMCA. And whereas John enjoyed family fishing trips, duck and quail hunting, but most of all flying his airplane. He also enjoyed being an elder in the First Presbyterian Church. Now be it resolved by the City of Warren that John Bernard Frazier Jr. is thereby honored for his lifelong devotion to his family and his fellow citizens. Thank you very much.
I move that we adopt resolution number 666, a resolution honoring former mayor John Bernard Frazier Jr.
Motion in second to adopt resolution A66. Any discussion? All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. Thank you for sharing your husband with the city.
Appreciate it. Well, Mary, I would like to say just one thing, if you would let me.
Absolutely.
I remember when I got started with Potlatch, and I thought that was a really big deal, until I got an opportunity to get over in the corporate side. And the first time I went to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, I was kind of lost, because I was the only one that looked like me up there. And lo and behold, I heard somebody out in the back when I was giving my presentation, it was Mr. Frazier. And upon donating some land west, southwest of Hampton for the Audubon Society, we had a big Goldstein's and everything, and big place down there, and then I seen him there. And then I just noticed every time something was really important going on in the city of Warren or with the Potlatch Corporation, he was there. And so I would like to thank the families for letting us have him, because without people like him in the city of Warren, we would not have Potlatch Corporation here today, because we had that hometown influence on people that could actually say something and be heard, and I would like to thank him for that.
Thank you, sir. Public comments? I don't believe we had anybody sign in. Ms. White, would you like to just step forward and you can, you're welcome to come to the podium, or if you want to stop right there.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashman White, and I am with Precious Jewell Birthing Project here in Warren. This was a birthing project that I began in 2015 under the umbrella of Birthing Project USA. Coming for you, I'm trying to do an invite for everyone here, because we're having a community baby shower for the models that are on the program only, which will be Sunday, January 16th to 20th through the 2nd, at your Warren House Authority, 2:30 to 4:30 p.m. Just to give you a little highlight about what the Birthing Project feels, we are here to help reduce infant mortality among moms, trying to help to bring healthy babies in. We do recruit by sister friend, and that is you are a sister friend to, you're a big sister to a little sister that is pregnant, and the ages can range from 12 to 44 years of age. It's not based upon income, it's not based upon single parent, it's for anyone. We also have one that's called a brother. They have a big brother to a little brother, who is also coming in. Also, I just want to kind of discuss, I'm also been working at, actually, instead of the Birthing Project, but just for me personally, trying to get diapers in, car seats in, hygiene products in for moms here in Bradley County. Because I see that there is a need here in Bradley County, because it doesn't matter what your income is, or where, because anybody can fall on hard times, and you never know when the baby is gonna come. So that's my other platform that I am working on personally, myself. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can we just drop, I mean diapers or things like that off of the housing authorities before Sunday?
You can, but we also own Popechop Inc. You can drop them off at 702 South Morris Street as well.
At any time.
At any time, from 9:00 to 5:30.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and I would like to have you there, Mary, if you don't mind, to do the welcome.
2:30?
2:30.
Saturday?
Sunday.
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 Okay, I'm sorry, I put the wrong address. Okay.
And I have a brochure and everything, if anybody wants to see.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Willie Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, you want to come forward?
I can stay right here.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Willie Thomas, I live at 1112, well, 1120 Boyd Street. And we have a problem over there with people dumping dogs, trash, and stuff like that. We wanted to know, could the city put up some signs up saying no littering or no dumping or something over there, maybe to help us?
Yes, sir, we'll look into that. I know that the street department worked over on Boyd Street just a couple of weeks ago, getting a lot of debris cleaned up.
Well, they should have seen a couple of bags out there too, because I was picking it up, putting it in bags, leaving it for them to get it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir, I'll look, I'll check in to see what kind of signs we have and if we need to order some.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there an alderman that wants to be recognized?
And that's the reason why Mr. Thomas is here, is because I asked him, asked him to come, and that's one reason, because that's the way that I travel each day, and again, I keep huffing on how sad he looks, but, you know, it's been there with for years, and but it's in the city limits, and we need to do something.
I was amazed at the debris of things that the city crew told me that they picked up from anyone. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll start with our committee reports. Chief Hildreth, is that with police?
Good evening.
I do believe everyone has their mic and port in front of them. Not too much has changed. As you can see, we've gotten a little bit better than our personnel department. We're still currently looking for a full-time dispatch, law control, that's now from the two or three we've been looking for in the past. We're also still waiting on the vehicle that was ordered to come in, and it's looking to come in from the one that was ordered back last year. Other than that, business as usual. But here we have reports pretty much in the month report.
Do you want to have any questions? Alderman Frazier is police committee chair, does he have anything?
I don't.
Okay. If there's no questions, then thank you, sir. All right, next we will have the acting fire chief, Mr. Larry Hayes. I think you all received my email this morning, our fire chief moved in Friday, and late Friday afternoon, his wife got notification that she had tested positive. She had tested on Tuesday, and she was rapid test negative, and they were treating her for strep throat, and then they got the email in the mail, so we're delaying his start date for a week. So anyway, we've got Larry.
One more week.
One more week. Go ahead. Mr. Hayes?
All right, so the Warren Fire Department responded to 12 calls in December, four of those being toned out between fire department extrication. And we had one monthly meeting on December 6th with 22 members present. During our training, we just went over our fire calls for the month of November, and went ahead and started discussing our fireman's ball stuff that's coming up.
Do you want to announce when that is?
Yeah, our annual fireman's ball will be February 5th, country club as usual, 7 o'clock, I believe it is.
Tickets or buy?
Yeah, ticket sales. We've got multiple firemen have the tickets. We have tickets at the station as well, they're $35 a piece, that includes a state dinner, you know, award presentation, live entertainment. And then we also have a raffle that's going on. Anyway, back to the general work down there. We've got the paperwork in order on the new fire engine with Deep South. We had the contract paperwork came in, just had to go over it all, make sure that everything was in order, signed by everyone and sent back to them. Like I said, we don't owe any money until that apparatus gets delivered there, approximating late February, early March on that. We went ahead and ordered some new extrication tools. The ones that we presently have are hydraulic, there's nothing wrong with those by any means, they're just, they weigh 70, 80 pounds a piece. There's new technology, battery operated tools, they weigh about half as much, a little less stringless on the guys, so we've got those that are coming in on our everyday rescue unit, and all the hydraulic stuff that we presently own will get transferred over to the ladder truck. We'll be building what they consider a heavy rescue.
We've got three new volunteer firemen?
We do. I wish I'd have brought all their names, because I know them by name. So civil service has elected to hire Dalton Bigel, Evan Forrest, and Levi Baldwin as three more volunteer firemen. We'll be getting them trained here soon. We're kind of going to get along with Bradley County Rule. They've got a few new guys in their department as well, we're going to try to get together and conduct our training, get these new guys on their three basic things, intro, E P and wildlands. Engine two down there, I ordered some actuators to fix a ladder rack. Long story short, I ordered the wrong ones, so I'm sending them back, and I'll get some new parts on the line. Anyway, it should be 10 to 2 by next month, anyway. And engine three is the old truck we were talking about replacing with the new one. I'm going to be needing to get approval from you guys to put that on the market for sale. We may need to wait until we get the new one, of course, but that'll be something coming up.
Alderman Telfrey, do you have anything to add?
Well, I see that the dues for the firemen is going to stay the same as last year, your fire dues?
These are, they do?
We don't have a fire dues. You're talking about for citizens of?
The firefighter dues? You say it's time to renew your job, because I'm thought firefighter associate.
Those are, yeah, that's for the firemen that are there.
How many would it be?
31, 32?
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, sir. Oh, you're okay, wait. Alderman Telfrey, are you making the motion to vote to pay those dues?
Well, I was trying to. Well, I want to make a motion that we pay the dues for 32 firemen at $20 a piece.
Second. Motion in second to pay fireman dues, $32, I mean, 32 people. Any questions? All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
And I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the chief for doing such a great job while you were here, and for the last six months, I've been running back and forth to the hospital, and I really want to give my heart out for you reaching out to me, keeping me informed, and I'm on a real mission. And I thank the prayer for everybody else that's sent out to me, because I just think if you waited for God and the prayers that you sent out, that I wouldn't be able to make it, and I just wanted to let y'all know, I really appreciate my family also.
Thank you. And yes, Larry, we thank you for the service that you have put in with that, and chief.
I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to, you know, step in and help out.
What would it done without you?
I don't know. I figured it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now then, our sanitation manager, Mr. Rob Johnson, who I think needs no introduction.
Well, last week was my first full week. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of Warren again, do my best to do the best job I can for the citizens and the mayor and the city council. My main goal coming back is to try and clean the city up, and that's my number one priority. Also, along with the building code department, to make sure everything ran right, and keep Warren first-class city, as far as one of the guidelines. I don't have anything to report as far as where we are on light complaints, or where we are on cleanup, though I just practically haven't had time to get there yet. I'll have a full report on it next week. I've concentrated my time on the dumpsters and cleaning up around those last week, and meeting the guys and learning what they're doing, what they know, finding out that we have a real good group of guys, and that makes my job a lot easier. And I'll always be available if anybody needs to talk to me, and I made that mistake at the grocery store the other day, and I've been busy ever since. But you'd think you'd learn, after the first nine years, I would have learned, but, you know, I enjoy helping people, and if there's anything I can do for anyone, I don't want them to hesitate to call. That's all I've got. If you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Alderman Berks, do you have anything to add?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I got something I want to say.
All right.
Ms. Fullston may not be here, but I'm going to be watching that cardboard.
Well, don't watch it for the next two or three months, okay? Just give me a couple of months.
And I mean, Rob stepped in, and we immediately started having sanitation truck issues, so I don't know what, I mean, he knows where to go to to get the parts and get the stuff back up and working, and like he said, his crew worked New Year's Day, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day to clean up the dumpsters that weren't able, we weren't able to use a truck to do, so I have told them how much I appreciate that, so it was, it was nice to have somebody that knew what to do in a time of crunch right there, but, okay, there's nothing else? Thank you, sir. Mr. Hearnsberger, straight for him?
Good evening.
Evening.
For the monthly, pretty much, we still continue cleaning gutters, most of them that have to be done by hand, but we are cleaning them slowly. We're filling in some potholes all around at each different ward, we're trying to spread it all around where everybody can see that we're doing something. Also, getting the bids and quotes on, for the mini X, they're slowly but surely coming in, but we're looking at a problem that some of them is from May on out, getting a machine We got the decorations all took down, stored up with the help of the Botek, they built some container stores to store all that in, so maybe we won't have such a problem. That's just business as usual, other than that.
Okay. Alderman Mosley, I think you've got a couple of things to report out?
Yes, we had a street committee meeting December the 16th at the depot about the street bumps that we had put in, and we'd like to make a request, someone to make a motion, to take up the street bump between Chestnut Street and Bradley Street. We want to leave the other one there for now, we're looking into maybe a different kind, but we would like vote to remove the first one.
Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, sorry, that's a motion.
Second. A motion in second to remove the street bump that's located between Chestnut and Bradley. Any discussion?
Why are we removing?
Well, there's been a lot of controversy about it, and on the petition, the people that signed the petition were not all tax, they didn't get all the taxpayers to sign it, and we need to remove that when the complaint was basically because of the children. We're going to leave the one where the children are, where they live.
We need to vote, we've got a motion in second on the floor. All those in favor by show of hands to remove that one, so that's, all of those against? There were three, there were three, four, and Mr. Telfrey, I'm not sure.
You didn't ask for extension.
And one extension, and Mr. Telfrey, your hand, did it go up with yes or no?
Did you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, so there were four yeses and one extension, okay.
Also, we're going to have a street hearing, and we've set it for February the 17th at 5:00 a.m. in this courtroom.
Okay, anything else?
That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Barshall's not here, so there's no report from Community Economic Development. Anything for Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson?
No business.
Okay, Mr. Wagner?
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Nothing really new, everything's going pretty good. We're just getting real busy at the complex now, we got ball starting a little over a month, will be high school softball and baseball will be starting February 28th, so trying to make sure everything's working and running good out there, sports lights and everything in the fields, just trying to get it ready to look good for when they get started.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Wagner?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you've got the plating commission report, the minutes, there was no meeting, no meeting of the aviation commission. Water and sewer commission, you have the minutes and the balance sheet. Housing authority, you also have the minutes, they had no meeting. Postal center, you've got that report of the expenses, the school is using it. Is there any unfinished business? Any more public statements? Any new business announcements? The municipal league meeting that was going to happen in person, they canceled it Friday, it's now, they moved it to March, so if you had registered, or if you had hotel renovations and you didn't get the notification, you need to make some changes. Martin Luther King Holiday will be observed January the 17th, offices will be closed, and there will be no trash pickup that day? Yes, sir, Mr. Telfrey?
I would just like to encourage all of our council members, if you've got an opportunity to ride down through Hearnses on US 63 South, right there where the baseball field is, they built some new single-family housing right there, and just look at this and maybe to give us some ideas, because I think they sold all of them.
And they sold them all.
I think so.
And the V C, I think you all received a invitation from V C E D C, their annual meeting will be January the 31st, and Mr. Mike Preston, who is the secretary of commerce in the state of Arkansas, will be there as the speaker. I would encourage you to come, so that we can show Mr. Preston that we are serious about economic development down in the southern part of the state. I need a motion to pay the bills for December?
Make the motion, we pay the bills.
Second. Motion in second to pay the bills for December 2021. Any questions? All those in favor by show of hands, unanimous. Set the next meeting for February the 14th, well, Valentine's Day, we'll be here at 5:30, and then our next meeting. and then our end of meeting is the tenth at seven. So, uh, we will see you in February. Need a motion to adjourn?
I know that we're torn. Will you be my Valentine?
Yes, I will.
I'm sorry.
All right, y'all, continue to be safe.